Well, welcome everyone to Bible study here at Bethel Lutheran Church. Let's begin with a word of prayer. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we continue to follow our Lord and Savior Jesus, as he now enters Capernaum and does some ministry there. And we are in chapter eight. Lord, we ask that you help us to follow him and learn from his words and his actions in the situations that he is in, so that we may apply those in the situation in which we find ourselves. These things we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay, I don't know that we have many announcements today. We will be coming up on Holy Week very shortly. Monday, Thursday is April 1st, Easter Sunday is April 4th, and of course Palm Sunday is the preceding Sunday. For Palm Sunday, we will not be meeting in the fellowship hall. We will be meeting in the sanctuary. And we can take palms into the pews there. Because of the social distancing, it'll be much safer to meet in the sanctuary, but we'll go through the regular service as well. Monday, Thursday worship service and Good Friday service will be online only, and we'll have a nice little presentation for you that you can pull up on YouTube there. And of course, Easter Sunday will be here at the church for anybody who wants to attend. Let's begin then, now with a recap of chapter seven. We are now in chapter eight for this week, but let's talk about what happened last time in chapter seven of the book of Matthew. He begins his teachings, Jesus does, and he's still in the Sermon on the Mount. And in today's lesson, we will come to the end of the Sermon on the Mount. Well, he will now come down off the mountain, but he's still in the Sermon on the Mount. And he says, "Do not judge. The judgment that you render to other people will be rendered unto you." This judgment that he's talking about isn't judgment by way of discernment. It's judgment by way of condemnation. You don't judge a person with the intention of condemning them to hell. Only God does that, okay? But you know, your normal word for judgment, using your judgment, using your good judgment, that's not what he's talking about. But he says, in other words, don't take the place of God. Don't judge. Do this. He says, "Do not give what is holy to dogs." And this is a seemingly cruel statement. What he's talking about, don't waste your time on people for whom the conversation is not going to be profitable. It seems a little cruel, but it's true. "Don't cast your pearls before swine, where they will be trampled underfoot." In other words, what you carry is very sacred. Your time is very valuable. Use it with as much efficiency as you can in the service of the gospel. Now, this doesn't mean that you treat other people as objects to be used or anything like that, but at the same time, there is a very... There is an admonition here to be sensitive about how you spend your time. You can wind up getting into useless arguments with people, useless debates, and there are people who like to engage in that kind of stuff. And so, he's talking about not wasting your time doing this. He continues with, "Ask, seek, and knock, that God will give what you ask for, like a good parent." God is like a good parent, and if we ask of him, we will receive. And he concludes that one section there with the golden rule. "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." And he equates that golden rule with the law and the prophets. He says, "All the law and the prophets are contained here." So what does this mean? If you get this right, you've got everything. It's an incredible simplification of a life of faith. "Do unto others as you would have done do unto you." You notice that that is a statement that is totally about the relationship that we have with other human beings. And that's the relationship we have with God. That's all the law and the prophets. This might have come as a little bit of a surprise to the people who heard it, because in every aspect of their daily lives, they sought to obey the law and the prophets. It was on their mind constantly. And he said, "The way that you fulfill the law is simply in the way you treat other people." It's horribly uncomfortable if you bathe your life on slavish obedience to every nook and cranny of the law. Can you imagine having that kind of life? And now, he says, "Set that all aside. This simple rule is the way you're to live." To me, this is more difficult. It's easier for me personally to tick off some checks in the boxes next to the rules. Say, "I've done that, I've done that," than it is to discern how I'm treating my neighbor all the time. I can obey the rules and still treat my neighbor pretty bad. You know, legalistically, you can still be a pretty evil person. But... So he likens this to the law and the prophets, which represents all the authority that they would have known. He continues to tell them to go through the narrow gate, not the wide gate. In other words, he's simply saying that a life of faith is a difficult life. It's not that easy. It's not that easy. And he warns them to beware of false prophets, because the disciples will now take his message and go out and begin to preach and do works in his name. Other people will see that and will see the popularity that that engenders. And they'll try to hitch their wagon to that. And there are several figures that we've encountered in them. One in the book of Acts, you remember, where the magician starts wanting to use the name of Jesus, because the disciples, Paul in particular, is starting to steal his thunder. Do you remember that story? He gets to town, he's the head cheese, he's the flavor of the week. People are coming to this magician. When Paul comes to town, they start flocking to Paul. So he wants to switch brands, so he can attract people, and Paul undercuts his thunder there. And so, there will be people who line up behind whatever they think will get them an advantage. There will be a lot of false prophets. They are like wolves in sheep's clothing. They're gonna act like they're disciples of Jesus Christ, but they're not. And how do you know these people? He says, "By your fruits you will know them." Look at what they do, all right? Look at what they do. That's how you really... That's the bottom line as to how to discern the legitimacy of anybody who claims to be a prophet or even a disciple in Jesus Christ. Those who do the will of God are the ones who know Jesus. And he concludes the section in chapter seven by talking about, "Hearing his word and doing it, and the hearing of his word and doing it is like a man who builds his house on a rock." And the one who hears it and doesn't do it builds his house on the sand. It's temporary, just gets blown away. Just gets blown away. All right, so, you know, we in the Lutheran church have the doctrine of justification, and we can sometimes misinterpret our own doctrine in a way that makes it look like what we do is not important. But that's really not the gospel. All right, well, our justification gets us the grace of God, the forgiveness that it brings, and the inspiration of the Holy Spirit moves us as to how we live, changes the way we act. There's a line in the book of Concord that says, "When through faith the Spirit is given, the heart is moved to do good works." So it's as natural as the apple coming from the apple tree, all right? Luther wrote about that a little bit, because that was always the... The danger of the doctrine of justification is that you will so separate yourself from works that you can live terribly and think you still have faith. And there you have the struggle also, the seeming conflict between the way Paul presents the gospel and the way St. James presents the gospel. "Show me your faith without your works," says James. Faith without works is dead. Yeah, so that's always been a struggle for Lutherans in particular and Protestants in general, is the misinterpretation of the doctrine of justification as being totally non-efficacious as to how we live our lives. That's not what it is at all. That's not what it is at all. And so, there we have it in chapter seven. So let's continue then with chapter eight, and we're gonna see him ending the Sermon on the Mount and see what comes next. Chapter eight, verse one. "When Jesus had come down from the mountain, great crowds followed him. There was a leper who came to him and knelt before him, saying, 'Lord, if you choose, you can make me clean.' And Jesus stretched out his hand and touched him, saying, 'I do choose; be made clean.' Immediately his leprosy was cleansed. Then Jesus said to him, 'See that you say nothing to anyone, but go show yourself to the priest; offer the gift that Moses commanded as a testimony to them.'" Okay. So what do we know about lepers in the time of Christ? What do we know about lepers in the time of Christ?
They were outcasts of society.
Yes.
And their disease was uncurable.
Yes. Leprosy, as defined in those days, was a broader definition than the specific disease of leprosy that we've known in our time. It could be any kind of lesions on the skin or things like that. Remember, they didn't have the medical wherewithal that we have for diagnosis. Lepers, it says that the leper came to him. In the time of Christ, a leper would never come to anybody. Ever. They were to remain at a distance and to shout out, "Lepre, lepre, lepre." So it was to prevent anybody from getting too close to them.
Was the disease in fact contagious, I guess?
Yeah, well, they must have thought so, because, sure, yeah. Yeah, it must have been their experience, because they... They would usually hang around outside the town. Maybe people would come out and throw some food at them or something, but they would never come to a person as they're coming to Jesus here. So that right there is a violation of a hard boundary that's being done by the leper, which shows a boldness on the part of that leper, which would not have been normal. Anybody who was a leper would have been worried about somebody killing them for coming to Jesus. You drove them out, you kept them away. So that right there is the breaking of a major boundary. The confidence to assume that you have the right to be in the proximity of this rabbi was unheard of. Even in the proximity of another person, much less a rabbi or a teacher. All right, and that's the first thing that happens when he comes down from the mountain. Says, "The crowds followed, and there was a leper." But what else does this mean? The leper's in the middle of the crowds. That, you know, that just was unheard of. All right.
Maybe they were all wearing masks.
I think so. Yeah, they all had...
A few holdouts.
Couple guys in the back didn't want to get the vaccine, they just forget about it. "Lord, if you choose to make me clean." Another extreme violation of the boundary. He reached out his hand and touched him. You didn't do that. You just didn't do this. You don't touch a leper, because then you're unclean. Nobody's gonna wanna be around you.
Contaminated.
Contaminated, exactly. Yeah. Yeah. I got a kick, I was over at the hospital. I can't remember what I was doing over there. There's the front door, and I saw a couple of the ladies, I think they were nurses, and they had on the full gear. It was this blue, it looked like hazmat suits. It literally looked like...
They are hazmat suits.
Oh, are they? Yeah. But I was just laughing, I thought, wow, you're really taking this seriously. It's, you know, and... So he stretches out his hand as he touched him. "I choose; be made clean." Immediately, his leprosy was cleansed. And there, we find the messianic secret. Don't tell anyone.
That's curious, though, being in the middle of the big old crowd who all saw this happen. They must have been blown away by it.
Sure.
They could have told some people, you know.
Yeah. How successful would that have been? Don't tell anybody. Cats out of the bag, you know? This comes over from the Gospel of Mark undoubtedly. Remember that Mark is one of the sources of the Gospel of Matthew. And Mark is very big on the messianic secret. You don't let the word out. And that may be for the preservation of his ministry, because if he gets too popular too quickly, he will catch the attention of the Romans or others who wish to kill him. Part of doing the ministry and proclaiming the message is staying alive long enough to get the message out. So Jesus is bobbing and weaving constantly. John the Baptist wasn't so good about that. He was at stationery, and they got him and killed him. All right, so that's what we call the messianic secret, the secret that he's the Messiah.
Sometimes that's the best way for word to get out. Now, don't you tell anybody about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you hear about it? Now, don't tell anybody about that. Just so true to me.
But he does tell him to make a public display in the sense of going to the temple, making the offering. So the priests in the temple will know that he's been made clean by this healer from Nazareth. Okay, and they won't be able to deny it. Yeah, and that's what a leper... Excuse me, a leper would have had to do in order to be readmitted back into the society. He would have had to show himself to the priests. They would examine him. He would have to make an offering, and then he could be allowed to go home. Otherwise, he couldn't come anywhere near the town.
That's the gift that Moses commanded?
Yes, it's an offering or something, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for every sin or every uncleanness, you had to pay... Remember when Mary and Joseph bring Jesus to the tent, to the temple? When they have to pay, what was it, eight days after he's born? They pay an offering there to dedicate him to God and for the fact that she was pregnant and unclean. Takes care of all that, so... It's a similar kind of thing. Okay, so now he's down off the mountain. He's encountered a leper, and let's continue with verse five. "When he entered Capernaum, a centurion came to him, appealing to him and saying, 'Lord, my servant is lying at home paralyzed in terrible distress.' And Jesus said to him, 'I will come and cure him.' The centurion answered, 'Lord, I am not worthy to have you come under my roof, but only speak the word, and my servant will be healed; for I also am a man under authority, with soldiers under me. And I say to one, 'Go,' and he goes; and to the other, 'Come,' and he comes; and to my slave, 'Do this,' and the slave does it.'" When Jesus heard him, he was amazed and said to those who followed him, "Truly I tell you, no one in Israel have I found such faith. I tell you, many will come from east and west and will eat with Abraham and Isaac and Jacob in the kingdom of heaven, while the heirs of the kingdom will be thrown into the outer darkness, where there will be weeping and gnashing of teeth." And to the centurion, Jesus said, "Go; let it be done for you according to your faith." And the servant was healed in that hour." That's the 13th verse there. Notice that he goes from two figures. One is the least powerful, most helpless person. That's the leper. And the other is the most powerful, least helpless person, the centurion. But both of them humble themselves before Jesus. That's the common threat. A lousy leper who shouldn't even be shown his face, and this Roman centurion who was the symbol of power, that they would have all recognized. He says that he's, "Like you, I'm a man under authority." What he's doing is he's recognizing the authority of Jesus to make things happen. All right. Recognizing the authority to make things happen. And Jesus says something that I wonder if it would not have been an insult to everyone who's watching. "Nowhere in Israel have I seen such faith."
Well, he goes on and rubs it in even further, you know, in verse 11, so...
Oh, yeah, and this is the divine reversal, right? Those who have the legitimate inheritance are not gonna get it. Those illegitimates who are coming in by faith are the ones who will be granted the kingdom of God. Nowhere in Israel, in other words, what he's talking about is about people. "Nowhere among the people, the children of Abraham, have I seen such faith." Yeah. So the Roman centurion is symbolically bowing down Roman authority and submitting to the authority of Jesus. The leper shows his faith by raising himself above the power that he's supposed to have. The Roman centurion shows his faith by lowering himself beneath the power that he's supposed to have. And yet, both of these are acts of faith. So in just a few verses, Matthew runs the gamut between the lowly and inconsequential and disposable and the high and mighty, and submits both of them under the authority of Christ.
It's interesting twice that Roman officer uses the word "sir," at least in this verse. "Sir, my servant is sick." "Oh, no, sir," just like a military person would do, you know?
Yes.
"Sir, no, sir."
Yes. Almost regarding him as his military superior, salute him maybe, yeah. Yeah, that's interesting. That's interesting. And of course, the servant is healed, and we don't... "My servant is lying at home paralyzed in terrible distress." We don't have any information as to exactly what the illness is, but the centurion believes that Jesus has the power to heal him, and that's faith, believing that God has the power to do it. Yeah.
I think it says a lot about the centurion that he was distressed because of the state of his servant.
That's true. That's a good point. He had compassion for an underling.
Yes.
Yes, that's a good point, yeah. You're just thinking that those people would be disposable to a centurion. Let them die, we'll get another one. But he didn't. Maybe that's it's...
In all likelihood, this centurion was probably a Gentile, which means that Christ is now starting to open up towards being the children of Israel.
Most certainly, he was not a Jew, because Jews were not allowed to serve in the Roman military until the time of Constantine and shortly thereafter. Before that, Christians could not serve in the Roman military. And after that, at a certain point, you had to be Christian to serve in the Roman military.
What a turnaround.
Yeah, what a turnaround, yeah. All right. And we're gonna see a little bit of a shift here on my note. But here, it says, "When Jesus entered Peter's house," it's verse 14. "His mother-in-law saw his mother-in-law lying in bed with a fever. He touched her hand, and the fever left her. She got up and began to serve him. That evening, they brought to him many who were possessed with demons. He cast out the spirits with a word and cured all who were sick. This was to fulfill what had been spoken through the prophet Isaiah. He took our infirmities and bore our diseases." This house in Capernaum is the home base that Jesus has established in Capernaum. And we've read about it before in the book of Acts. And I think a few weeks back, we saw in our scripture lesson at church, our gospel lesson, we saw Jesus staying at this house, and people are coming, and they're bringing their sick and their infirm and demon-possessed. And then Jesus goes out, and Peter and the disciples frantically go look for Jesus. And what does Jesus say to them? "Let us go on to the next town." So there is this momentary... A moment of being static in a certain place at this house of Peter. It's interesting, because Peter's one of the first disciples that Jesus calls by the Sea of Galilee. So Peter had a home in Capernaum. And that's what leads me to believe that all these people knew each other long before Jesus ever walked on earth.
And he was married.
Yes.
That isn't expressed anywhere else. I didn't know that some of these apostles were...
Oh, yes.
Were married.
Yes. So when they leave to follow Jesus, they're leaving their families and their businesses. James and John Zebedee left their father Zebedee, you remember? Who's gonna run the business? And that might have appeared to be some kind of a betrayal of your family. And yet, we're gonna see very shortly what he has to say about that. Okay, so you have this base in Capernaum out of which Jesus is operating from and leaving there occasionally and making excursions and coming back. But people are beginning to come to him, attracted by the knowledge that there is this healer. And as I said before, had Jesus never healed anybody, you probably wouldn't even know his name. That's one of the things that attracted so many people to him. All right, now listen to this. What about this family thing? Well, listen to this. Verse 18, "Now, when Jesus saw great crowds around him, he gave orders to go over to the other side." Oh, wait, okay. What does this mean? Up until this point, we're made to understand that he's at the house in Capernaum. Now he gives command to go to the other side of what?
Is that Capernaum on a lake?
Yes, it is. To the others, but it almost presents him as if he's on the beach, as if he's not in the house at all, you know? It seems like a little bit of sea change, if you'll pardon the expression, you know? There. It just doesn't seem to fit very well, in my opinion.
Yeah, it goes from here, now we're gonna go to the other side. There's that blank spot in the middle.
Yeah, how did he get...
Go to Peter's house, go to the beach, and down the boat. It doesn't say that explicitly. I guess you just have to assume that makes sense.
No, it's the only way I can make sense out of it. "A scribe then approached and said, 'Teacher, I will follow you wherever you will go.' And Jesus said, 'Foxes have holes; the birds of the air have nests; the son of the man has nowhere to lay his head.'" What does that mean in your own words? Everybody's got a home. Everybody's got a home. Fox has a hole, birds of the air have nests, but the Son of a man has nowhere to lay his head. That speaks to the transience of his ministry. He's kind of in a home base here, and, uh, he's telling this scribe, "And the scribes were by no means wandering nomads." They pretty much stuck to their area, okay? And he's saying, "If you're with me, you're on the move, and you don't have any attachments. So get ready to give up all that stuff." That's very hard for anybody to do, anybody. It just is, you know? It's a human tendency to make a nest wherever you are, to make a space where you're comfortable, and, uh, at least you have something you can count on. Jesus, uh, gets rid of all that. But a person who has no attachments cannot be bound by any of them. As well. Well, he goes even further with this point now. Okay, "Foxes have holes; birds of the air have nests; the Son of a man nowhere to lay, nowhere to lay his head." "Another of his disciples said to him, 'Lord, first let me go and bury my father.' But Jesus said to him, 'Follow me, and let the dead bury their own dead.'" Little hard to take there, huh?
That may be a misquote.
Well, I would like to believe that, but we're gonna have to start looking for loopholes. Uh, there may be a little bit of hyperbole there, I would like to think so. But, uh, the dead, why is he calling them the dead? People who care about their parents and wanna bury them are dead? There is an extreme reliance on nothing, including family attachments. What Jesus forms is the new family, and that's the family that you're loyal to. And I can't emphasize enough the extreme lengths he goes to here. Can you imagine the person hearing that? "What are you talking about? We're not dead, we're trying to honor our Father."
It's like leaving the rich man leaving money, "Follow me," to the apostles, "Follow me," there was no ifs, ands, or buts about it.
Right.
Here, it sounds like, you know, "We haven't got time to do that. That is already taken care of, to whatever it's going to be. We are going to make more of it."
Yeah. And this is the most closely personal part of it. This isn't just leaving your house or your money, this is leaving your family.
Yeah. "If you follow me anywhere, do this; that will show thyself and everywhere around. You said you would follow me. Oh, wait a minute, there's stipulations, and I'll follow you if, then you're not serious about it."
Yeah, that's a good word, stipulations. With Jesus, there's no stipulations. No ifs, ands, or buts, it's total, total.
Commitment.
Commitment. The place I am most likely to get in trouble here at Bethel is when I preach funeral sermons. Because every word you say is parsed by every person sitting in the pew. And they're all looking, well, I'm not saying they're all looking for insults, but they can be insulted easily by what you say about the deceased. It's, it's like there's a mega sensitivity there that doesn't exist in any other worship service.
Yeah, we've suffered a loss, and they're raw.
And so if you get a little bit cheeky, somebody will be offended. Of course, in the world we live on, somebody's offended about anything anyway, but that's a very sensitive time.
Each person's experiences are different than your individual relationship, so it could come off really good or come off bad, depending on the individual listener, as what their experiences have led them to feel and experience.
Yeah, yeah. Not in weddings, sometimes weddings can get you in trouble too with the, you know, the, what's, a little joke to one person is a terrible insult to the other person. Even if that person has told that same joke about themselves. I did that once in a sermon here. I, I used a term that the other person had used of themselves. I probably should have explained it, but it was, it was insulting to somebody. It's like, oh, that's what they call themselves, that's, that was our, our thing, that was kind of a joke they used to make about themselves. But, but what's insulting to one person who knew the person very well is funny to the other person and vice versa. How dare you say that about that person? And the other guy might say, "Oh, I remember that, that's hilarious," you know? It's just, but th- those are those times when the sensitivity is very high. And when these people are trying to honor their parents, for a Jew, that's everything, that's, that's the family, that's the preservation of their existence. And he's telling them, "Forget about it."
Could it be that he was trying, that he was really testing the man's faith? "Even death, better than following me," says Jesus. Maybe he was testing the man like that.
Well, it certainly would have been.
"How close do you wanna be to me?" says Jesus. "Do you really believe in me? They'll, they'll take care of themselves. You follow me," says he.
Yes, uh, it would have been a test, wouldn't it? If you heard that, that would have been a test of your loyalty. But the way in which he does it, "Let the dead bury their dead." He's insulting people he doesn't even know. Your family's dead. The people who, who want to honor your father's memory, they're dead. That's a heck of a test. I mean, I would have said, "Well, what right do you have to be trashing my family," you know? How do you know they're dead, you know? What are you, God? Yes. But that would have, it seems to me it would have been deeply insulting to the person who heard it. Anyone who isn't absolutely loyal to me, to the exclusion of everything else, is dead. Life, death. No, no gray area. No stipulations, I think, was it Vic who said that? No stipulations. Rough?
I wonder about the families of those ten in Boulder, if they heard that very message.
What do you mean?
The ten people that got killed. And then Christ went to say, "Forget about it, follow me."
Boy.
That might be a little different situation. I mean, these, these people had their lives cut short. You know, I don't know the situation we're talking about, maybe that, you know, people grow old, they die, people back then got disease and died, you know? So I think the manner of what's going on has to be a factor.
And I don't think this man was saying, "Hey, my father just died, let me go bury him first." I think his father was still alive, and has a good son, he felt, "Let me go back and, you know, take care of him until he dies, and, and then I'll come follow you." That, that's the way I would.
Yeah, well, familial obligation.
You know, this American woman by the well, who pushed back on Jesus and got away with it, I wouldn't have been offended if this guy would have said, "Yeah, Lord, I understand, but I've got something I've got to do first for my family. I'll be with you in an hour." I wouldn't have found, I wouldn't have found that offensive, you know, but it, but this is just black and white.
Yeah, yeah, no, no stipulations, no, nothing. He does say, "Let me go bury my father." So I, I don't know that you'd ever talk about your father as if he was dead. That would have been
Yeah.
Something you didn't do.
Oh, I could be wrong, I don't know where I got that idea.
Well, I mean, did, did a guy just happen to be there whose father was dead? You might legitimately ask the question, then, "Why isn't he with his father's family right now? What's he doing hanging out with Jesus now? Shouldn't he be back there already?"
I wonder if it's something akin to, "Let me go say my goodbyes to my family."
Yeah.
You know? I'm kinda gonna give them up for you.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm thinking of is, like, these, uh, some people who go, "You're dead to me."
Yeah.
You know, so it's like, I've changed my focus of life. Instead of being family-centric, I'm now gonna be you-centric.
The prodigal son, when he tells his father, "Give me my share of the inheritance," that's exactly what he's saying. "You're dead to me."
Yeah.
Because that only occurred after he died.
Well, I'm thinking, maybe it's not literally dead in the ground, but you're dead to me.
There was a.
Let me go bury my father. Because I'm not gonna pay attention to him anymore.
Yeah. You remember what, what happened with the Emmanuel Church? It's a black church where that white racist kid went in and killed all those people?
In Atlanta.
There's actually a movie, I, I think it's, I think it's just called Emmanuel, I'm not sure, where they, they go look at that, and they talk to some of the people who survived it and others, and they struggle with the issue of forgiveness. Some of those people were able to forgive, in fact, I think, what is it, was it at the guy's arraignment? And this kid was really messed up. He would, he thought he would start a race war or something, he was just way out there. And, uh, I think one of the ladies, whose husband or something got killed, their, a family, maybe their child got killed, went to the arraignment and forgave him at the arraignment. And many of the other members of the congregation, as they interviewed them, talked about the forgiveness. And there was one man in particular, I remember, he says, "I can't forgive. I can't get there." And so that is, in a sense, betraying your family, in other words, taking those concerns and putting them on the back burner for the sake of the faith. But that takes an incredible amount of strength to do that. I mean, this kid walked in there, they were, did a Bible study, I think, together, they were praying together, and he just started shooting them. Or they ever.
I remember that.
Recovered from that, it's, it takes a level of faith that you marvel at that, you know?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you think about, let's say it happened to your family.
Yeah.
And you've got the ability or the wherewithal to forgive, and your family members don't understand that.
Yeah.
Now you're gonna get it.
He left one person alive just explicitly so that person could tell what happened.
Yes, and he told her that as he was walking around, yeah.
Yeah. And the guy, the person that says, "I, I, I'm not there, I can't forgive," that should probably end with the word "yet."
You know, as I was watching him, he didn't seem like a yet kinda guy.
Not forever, it's gonna be that way.
But there's always hope, you know, but not, but it's just, that's so easy to demand of somebody, that they be forgiving, because it's not taking the pound of flesh out of you, it's taking a pound of flesh out of them. It's easy to judge what somebody else, how their faith oughta work. You know, but I, I just, I just look at those people, and I say, "My God, what faith. What incredible kinda faith that they must have to overcome that."
Well, it's such a blessing to forgive, it's a powerful thing. I mean, we think of our own forgiveness, obviously, but when you can't forgive, you're holding on to something that.
It eats you up inside, it's, it's a very heavy burden, I guess.
I read, um, I don't think it was a book, I think it was a series of articles about what they called the reconciliation project in Rwanda. And they, it was, um, I'm assuming it was a Christian group, but I don't recall specifically. They worked at getting people from both sides of the, the horrible killings there. And it was an amazing thing, it just, they didn't know what to expect, but it started small, and it just, it just grew. And not everybody would participate, obviously, but people who had their family slaughtered or something, to be able to look a person in the eye that killed their family and say, "I forgive you," it was such a relief for that person, but also for the person who committed the murder. Turned, turned a lot of their lives around, and some of these people became lifelong friends.
There's, uh, so that, it's important therefore to, to be clear in what forgiveness is. It's giving up your right to justice. Bishop Tutu had, uh, a, a group like that, I don't know if he called it the reconciliation project. I can't remember what the name of it was, but somebody asked him, uh, some of these folks, you know, who had harmed the other people and the people who had been harmed, they went through the process, and there was forgiveness, but they didn't live together after that, then they didn't talk to each other very much, and they asked Bishop Tutu about that. "And why don't they do that?" He says, "Well, forgiveness doesn't mean that you become lifelong friends with the person. Sometimes it's just too darn painful to get chummy with a person who slaughtered your daughter, okay?" He says, "I can't be with you, I can forgive you." But, so I think it's really important to recognize that, that forgiveness isn't gonna make the relationship between the two people other than anything other than the fact that you give up your right to justice. That's what forgiveness is.
And not all of them became friends, but there were some.
Yeah, some do, some, some manage to do that. But, but then the person who has forgiven isn't living with that battle the rest of their lives. They're not seeking justice that they have no hope of getting, because oftentimes, that justice doesn't bring closure anyway, doesn't make you whole. You know? And I can understand the quest for it. You know, you hear of, of someone who's, who's, uh, someone has killed a member of their family, and they go to court and they don't get the, the sentence that they think is sufficient, and they say they don't have closure yet. But, but the question in my mind is, will you ever really have closure? Is that what gives you closure?
Well, the expression forgive but not forget, uh, when you think about it, is kind of interesting, I guess. There's some things you just can never forget, even though, um, you're able to forgive.
And sometimes it's not a smart idea to forget.
No.
Some guy who's a half-crazed lunatic, I think it's good to remember that there are half-crazed lunatics out there for the protection of society. This young racist kid, his head was messed up six ways from Tuesday. And he's, he's on the internet doing stuff, and some of his friends said he's talk kinda weird on occasion, but I think it's good to remember that the possibility of that kind of sinfulness in society, we don't wanna be naive and think that that doesn't exist. Forgiveness isn't the. Forgiveness isn't the dismissal of our recognition that there's evil in the world, you know? Is
Is, trying to think of how to word this question. Forgiveness, it doesn't necessarily need to be public. In other words, say, you've done something horrible. Now that forgiveness, do I have to say to you, "I forgive you"? Or can I just within myself, "I can forgive this guy for what he's done"? You know, and that, that gives some solace to me. But I mean, is, is telling you, "I forgive you," necessary?
That's a good question.
And that's what I'm getting at is, can forgiveness just be a very personal thing? That, you know, someone has wronged you? And can you just find it within yourself to forgive them? But you don't have to go up to them and say, "I forgive you for what you've done." I mean, is that, do you need
You have to make a formal presentation to that person.
An announcement that you're forgiven.
What if that person dies before you get a chance to say, "Now you've really got a pickle." So I think what you're saying makes more sense in real terms. You have to give forgiveness whether that person's still alive or not. If you've got this in your heart.
Or whether they hear it.
Right. It's, I, I, my personal thoughts are, you can forgive someone within yourself. You don't have to make, "Okay, Will, I forgive you." Because what if Will's not there and all of a sudden he gets killed and you've never got the chance to say?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you've got some of these wackos that do themselves in before anybody gets to them.
He may not know what you mean when you say, "I forgive you."
If forgiveness is, is
For you, not for them.
Yeah, yeah. If forgiveness is relinquishing your right to justice. Then that, that's the same whether you can publicly acknowledge or not. If there may be some people who simply can't face the person who killed their, their loved one, you know? And I don't know that there's anything negative about that. I, I suppose I would have a hard time doing the same thing, you know?
Yeah.
But if it's relinquishing your right to justice, it, it's freeing for yourself. And that's saying it's so trivial to say to a person who's in pain after they've been hurt. So that's not something that you can say to them, "Oh, you should forgive." Yeah, oh yeah, do go ahead and forgive. That's so easy. That's, that's
But it's true.
It, it's true.
But the timing is difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you get somebody that's pushing you to forgive somebody too hard, it's gonna have the opposite effect.
That's right. It might harden them in their position, yeah. Yeah, you, you gotta be, I try to be careful with the, "I know exactly how you feel" stuff. No, you don't, you know?
And you two think as bad as mine? You don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, you just need to go ahead and forgive. I, I try to not push that too much. Because you're making their journey through their pain, you're making their pain seem trivial. You know, you're dismissing them.
It could be done that way, yeah.
Yeah. Sometimes the only thing that a person can do is just hang on to being a human being. They're not at the point where they can forgive anybody. The stuff that's coming out of them may not be the most saintly. But the fact that they haven't gone and gotten a gun and blown that person away might be the best that they can do right now. You know? It might be the best that they're capable of right now. Yeah. So, all right. So here we go. "Follow me, let the dead bury their dead." Now he's gonna get into the boat, verse 23. "And when he got into the boat, his disciples followed him. A windstorm arose on the sea, so great that the boat was being swamped by the waves, but he was asleep." Are you, you guys boatsmen or boatspeople at all? I'm never asleep on a boat. I just, you know, it's just hard for me to be relaxed on a boat. I served on an aircraft carrier in the United States military. That's probably the most stable of boats, but I still, I still know it's a boat, you know? "They went and woke him up, saying, 'Lord, save us, we are perishing.'" And he said to them, "Why are you afraid? You have little faith." Then he get up and rebuked the winds and the sea. There was dead calm. They were amazed, saying, "What sort of man is this, that even the winds and the sea obey him?" So what kind of boat we talking about?
Not an aircraft carrier.
No.
One of those little people, but that may be about it, twelve or thirteen people.
Probably a fishing boat.
I can't remember what, where the archaeological discovery was, but they did find a first century boat in the Sea of Galilee. And they got it out of the mud and reconstructed it and everything like that. So it's a little, I don't even know if you'd wanna use it for a fishing boat. And the Sea of Galilee is famous for having ocean-like conditions. So this is a little piece of driftwood on a churning, you know, sea.
Is it shallow?
Pardon me? I don't know how deep it is. I think it's deep in some places. But whatever it is, when it starts acting up, it really goes.
This account here, they say disciples. In this case, is this just followers or is this the apostles? Or do you know?
There's only so many you're gonna get in that boat.
I understand that, but the way this is written, it is these men.
Well, Luke says, "With his disciples," I believe it's talking about the ones that have been
Yes.
They're believing, talking about what?
The ones that have been called to be
Some of the twelve, yeah.
I think the boat may have been not longer than between these two walls, you know?
And Luke it says, "As they were sailing," so you, I don't know if that's, it should be taken literally, but it must have had a sail. It must have been a boat, most of my guess is.
Right, right. Well, what's he doing asleep, you know?
Been a long day here. Look at all this stuff.
Well, that's true. That's true.
If you have this Bible on page fifty-three, there's an actual picture of the boat.
There is? Oh, there you go.
Well, all I know is every time I read this, I think, I would have said same thing. You know?
Well, of course.
I would have panicked. I don't think they were clear yet about who Jesus was.
Will, he's a safe Titanic on the side.
One guy's hanging off the sail for crying out loud. This picture'd scare you half to death. I hope you aren't rude. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, about eleven people on it.
Well, it's interesting that, that, one of you just mentioned that they didn't know what kind of man he was, what he was. It says, and the question is, what sort of man is this? You know? They're still coming to grips with the power that he has, despite the demonstration with the centurion and the leper and Peter's mother-in-law. Now, it's like, even the wind and the waves obey him? Okay, the centurion obeys him, that's pretty darn impressive. But the wind and the waves?
And a lot of the healing laid back even.
Yep.
It's like, they still have, wow, I see this, but I just keep getting astounded. What, how can this be? And what is this man? But it's, and this question here is, uh, the men of little faith. "I've shown you this, you've been with me all this time, you see this, and you still do not have the faith."
And, and he is just as merciless in his demand for faith here as he is elsewhere. "Oh, ye of little faith." What do you mean? Yeah, we almost getting our butts tossed in, in the drink here. Give us a break for crying out loud, you know?
Now, if you'd have been awake, that would have been a little different, you know? We could say, "Oh, okay, he's watching."
Yeah. He doesn't even care. In fact, I think as this story is told in one of the other Gospel renditions, it says, "Do you not care?" That we are perishing. And it's like, no, I don't.
What's your point?
Yeah. Geez. A little bit insens- of insensitivity upon our Lord and Savior, is it? He's not as, he's not as sensitive as we'd like him to be. He's the kind of guy that's, you know, "Jesus, I'm going in for surgery tomorrow. Get over it." Would Jesus make a good pastor? Would he?
Might have a small congregation.
I don't, I don't think by today's understanding, he would fit the bill very much. I think he, I don't think he'd get high marks for his pastoral care skills, you know, at least not here.
Yeah, and Mark, they say, "Teacher, don't you care that we are about to die?"
Yeah, he would have been regarded as a fairly insensitive person. Okay, well, let's include, include then, it says in verse twenty-eight, "When he came to the other side, to the country of the Getharines, two demoniacs came out of the tombs to meet him. Uh, they were so fierce that no one could pass that way. Suddenly they shouted, 'What have you to do with us, son of God? Have you come here to torment us before the time?' Now a large herd of swine was feeding at some distance from them. The demons begged him, 'If you cast us out, send us into the herd of swine.' And he said to them, 'Go.' So they came out and entered the swine, and suddenly the whole herd rushed down the steep bank into the sea and perished in the water. The swine herds ran off. And on going into the town, they told the whole story of what had happened to the demoniacs. The whole town came out to meet Jesus. When they saw him, they begged him to leave their neighborhood." All right. Getharines.
Who in Israel would have a herd of hogs?
That's the point. That's the point. These are, these are obviously not Jews.
Yeah.
Neither it's over here.
On the other side of
Yeah.
Jordan?
Uh, this is the Sea of Galilee. There's, uh, Capernaum's over here. So he's, he's going all the way to their side. And he winds up over here. And this is obviously not a Jewish town.
No.
Yeah. So, you know, that's, that's out of there. So why do the demons? Why do the demons beg him to send them into the herd of swine? It's safer than the abyss. It says, uh, "Before the time," he's saying, you know?
Time of judgment?
Yes. Where they will be done. They're not done yet, they wanna stay alive. So they're gonna take up residence in a hotel with pigs.
There might have been a bacon conservation going on there, too.
Yes. But the pigs cannot contain them, which means what? They are so evil and impure that even the impure pigs don't want them. And will kill themselves before being associated with these demons. That seems to be meant to amplify the odiousness of the demons in question. And there's a business interest here. This guy's just killed off a lot of their bacon. And, uh, okay, that's a nice trick. Take it somewhere else, please. Yeah, it's not good for business. So he's exercising power over demons. And in these last two parts of the chapter, one is the power over the wind and the sea. And the other is the power over the demons. This is getting less about humans and others, about natural forces and other, and demonic forces and metaphysical forces.
You know, I, I, speaking of swine, I've gotta go back to chapter seven, verse six, because there's a comic strip in the news gazette called Pearls Before Swine.
Yes.
And it's funny that the guy's a good writer. I, I had, I had no idea that that kind of headage apparently has its origin in Matthew seven, verse six. And that there's a significant religious component, pearls being the word of God, swine being unbelievers.
Yep.
But do you think, like, one person in a hundred would get that connection if, if in fact that's true? I had never thought about that before. Pearls before swine, just an expression.
Well, you are that person, Will.
Yeah.
Some, some people will, will pick that up, yeah.
Well, there's a lot of phrases in the Bible that we still use.
We don't recognize.
Yeah, they're taken on a secular
Right. And I remember, one in particular came to my mind, um, when I started reading the Bible for myself and, Jesus was talking about turning the other cheek, go the extra mile. If they, if the, so, mommy tells you to go one mile, go two, go the extra mile. And I thought, that's where that came from. There's a lot of that.
They, they use that on pedal time now.
What?
Go the extra mile.
Keep going, keep going.
The left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. Left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. Yeah, there's, I think there's a book that you can get that lists expressions that are common parlance in the English language that actually come from the scripture. And there's a lot more than you think.
I would imagine.
Yeah, it's going to Proverbs is a whole
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Romans.
One after another, yeah.
One thing I need a little clarification if I missed it. "When they saw him, they begged him to leave their neighborhood."
Yeah.
Why?
Because they
They could steal all their food.
They make, they make money selling pigs. And he doesn't want them, they don't want them destroying all their pigs.
Okay, so they didn't understand what was really happening, but they
I, I think they didn't care what was happening. What they cared about was that, "That's my money going down the drain."
Yeah. You got rid of the demons, but yet you're, our livelihood's running off into the other, okay.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, that's bad for business. Jesus is messing with payday, like we said. Yeah, these people's livelihoods depend on raising hogs. Yeah. I got a pig once from a congregation member, uh, in my last parish, and, uh, I think, you know, the price was fluctuating and, uh, used to be every farmer had a few pigs, and that's what got them through the winter and they could sell off some pigs. But the price was like ten cents a pound or something, some ridiculous, to where you couldn't feed them. You couldn't maintain the pigs, there was no way. And he calls me up, he says, "Pastor, would you like a pig?" I said, "Well, sure, why not?" You know? And he says, "Is that the processing place? You paid the processing fee?" I said, "Fine, that's fine." And, uh, the guy from the processing place, whatever they call that, uh, called me up and he was going through how they cut the thing. "Well, would you like it this way?" Like the, I said, "Look, I'm from Chicago. Just slice the thing up. I don't care what you do. Give me some burgers and some..." But remember how much meat we got out of that thing? Unbelievable. But they used to make their, part of their living during the winter, you know, after the money from the crop went out, that would, ran out, that would help to feed them. And every farmer used to have some pigs. And then it just got not, to be not profitable. They couldn't make the money on that anymore. So they started, that's where you get all these large farrowing houses with five thousand pigs. Because it's just not efficient to have twenty pigs anymore, you know?
In Luke's version of this story, there's just one man. As Jesus stepped ashore, he was met by a man from the town who had demons in him. A long time ago, this guy had given up clothes, was out of house. He could bust out of chains and all that. And, uh, his name is Mob, M-O-B. So the story is about just, that's interesting. So the story is about just, that's interesting, one person, rather than two.
You know, you find that, um, sometimes you'll see parallel stories in the, in the Gospels or elsewhere in the Scripture, where you'll see one angel and then the other story, which is obviously the same story, he'll say two. Depends on the way the person wants to report it. Yeah. Was it when Moses, is it Abraham or Moses who meets the three? Was it three that come at him?
Abraham.
Abraham, yeah, and then that's three, isn't it? Yeah, so it's, it's like, the represent, God is represented by one, two, or three angels, depending on, depending on. And I think in the, in the tomb scene, in one instance, there's, there's two angels, one at the head of the slab, and one at the foot, and then I think another one is just one. So it's obviously, not to be taken literally, but the...
Well, when there's two, there's always one.
That's true. Alrighty, well, uh, next week, chapter nine, now let's see, uh, this coming Sunday is Palm Sunday. The following week is Holy Week, and, uh, I think we should, we should go ahead and have our Bible study anyway. Dave and I are gonna record them on a Thursday, Sunday, a service right after that. And I'll leave the recorder right down here, or go upstairs. I'm thinking, maybe, maybe just down here, because it'll be convenient, it'll sound better. Yeah.
Sound better than...
Upstairs.
Fellowship halls really the only place that sound bad.
That's what I mean.
Oh.
Yeah. You know how we have that monthly Thursday, and there's tables?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We did that last year. But I can just stick it...
You can do it down here, the acoustics are much better.
Yeah, we'll probably just have a monthly Thursday here, have a little communion here, and have the Scripture and the message. And it would look nicer, this, this looks nice right here. Okay, any questions, comments, snide remarks?
Do you know what you get when you cross a gorilla with a parrot? I'm not too sure either, but if you ask for a cracker, you better give it to him.
Good advice.
You asked for it.
Yeah, I know, I got it.
Wronged false.
Something in the air in this room today's bugging me. Alrighty. Our Father.
Glory to heaven, howl be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. The covenant is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Go in peace and serve the Lord.
Amen.
Thanks for coming, everybody, appreciate it.